Hey Jillian, can you hear me?
Hey Josh, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Alright, and we have Judy also. Hi Judy.
Man, that is like real close to my face.
Hi Josh, I met you on on Sandra Lane one day when you were mapping.
Yeah, I believe that sounds familiar. I know your face, I couldn't tell you where it from though.
That's where.
Your shoes aren't here.
Hey Tim.
Hey Jillian.
Hey Tim.
Hey Josh. This is it for the night.
Letting in David and Judith now, and then we have Jess Wilson as an attendee. I believe she's here for public comment.
Right. Hello Judith.
Oh, yeah me.
How you doing?
Good.
Yeah, how's the hip?
The hip's fine, the knee's a little angry.
Yeah.
That's what was replaced, yeah.
Oh, the knee, I thought it was hip.
No, the knee. I'm told that the hip's easy.
Before we know it, you know, yeah there.
Hi David.
Good evening. So the knee is unhappy, huh?
You know, not that bad, not that bad. Pretty amazing really. I was dumbfounded at how easy it actually was. Of course I was on Oxycon, a couple of other things, but.
Are you dancing yet?
No, but I'm going down to coffee and walking pretty well.
Great.
It's not bad after three weeks.
That's fantastic, actually.
Yeah, I think so. I think the, maybe the robotics made a little bit of a difference.
You officially an android yet?
Yeah, I told him I wanted, I wanted the electric assist option in my knee. Said they didn't have that yet, but.
And Tim, TJ said that he wouldn't be here tonight, just an FYI.
Well, thanks to TJ for letting us know. That's what, five of us now? Two, three, four, four of us.
Andrea's maybe here.
Hey Jillian, thanks for getting the packet out a day early. I know it can be a push sometimes.
No problem. Uh, Tim got it to me early, so we were able to get it out early, which was awesome.
Thank you Tim too, awesome.
I have to thank Jillian for that, she was putting up with my kind of mediocre production over the last couple of weeks, but she got it out, yeah. Let's see, who are we missing? Cheryl and?
Robin.
Robin, yeah. Maybe I'll jingle.
Where did David go, wasn't he here?
Yeah, still here, I just, I have to switch computers to look at some of the documents for the meeting.
Okay, let's see.
So do we have quorum with four people or do we?
Cheryl Klein just said she's having trouble.
Oh, okay.
Cheryl says she's having trouble getting in, and Robin says she's having trouble getting in. I had to do it as a window log on, a Windows log on. Let's see. Well Cheryl's in, looks like.
Robin should be coming on now.
Okay.
That's not Robin. Trying to fool us, huh Josh?
Ah nah.
There's Cheryl.
Hi Cheryl. You're muted? Robin, good to see ya.
Yeah, finally. Long time to get in.
A little while.
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five of us. Five members. Nancy's a a no-show tonight. But that's okay, we have a quorum and we can go ahead and call the meeting to order, the October 28th, 2024.
Actually, we're actually six Tim, because Andrea says.
Excuse me?
I think we're six because Andrea's here.
She should be here shortly. Okay, the October 28th, 2024 OSAC meeting. And, yeah Andrea, there she is. The bridge, too far. One, two, three, four, five, six. That's great. Okay, first thing is approval of minutes, and we have a very short set of minutes on the for the oh shoot, did I just knock everybody out there?
No, we're still here.
How did I lose everybody?
Tim, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, we're here.
Okay, we're all good. Okay, so the we have a very short set of minutes for the April 8th meeting. And thank you to Jillian for putting that together. And did everybody have a chance to read this?
Yeah.
Any comments? Okay, can I hear a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the April.
Second?
I'll second, it's Andrea.
From Robin, and everybody in favor, raise your right hand.
That was Andrea who seconded.
Oh, did we lose Andrea again?
No, no, she's here, but she seconded the motion.
She's doing what, I'm sorry?
She's, she seconded the motion.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Not Robin, just her notes.
So we'll call it we'll call it six out of six. Approved. Thank you. The next two sets of drafts, I think Tim Beeson is responsible for these, and neither one of them got done. I will have them done for the next meeting.
And Tim, I'll interject, the draft minutes for July and August, they were finished almost right after I sent out this agenda. And we worked so hard on it, I did not want to go back and redo it, so they will be available at OSAC's next meeting along with the September minutes, so you'll have quite the batch.
Okay, that's great. Excellent, yeah, and the September minutes as well, which are the regular minutes for the minutes for the regular meeting, so all three of those are going to be done by next meeting. I'm sure everybody's excited about that, so we'll move on from there. Agenda review and public comment on non-agenda items, this is where we're going to get we're going to get Jessica Wilson in.
Tim, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick, could we get the approval for the draft minutes for October 18th as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was just an excellent job David, that was great, I enjoyed reading that.
Well, that's, that's not just me, that's Jillian too, she's the one who compiled our notes, I just submitted mine, so I.
We tagged keep it.
Yeah, you could, you could do a video, that's, that was really excellent, thank you. Did everybody have a chance to read through that? And look at the pretty pictures? I hope so. Andrea, are you joining us, or? Something happened.
I am here, can you not see me?
No.
Oh, that's super weird.
We see that.
At the Golden Gate Bridge?
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I've been here.
Thanks Jillian for reminding me of that. Can we get the approval, somebody want to offer a motion to approve the wonderful October 18th minutes?
Sure, I'll do that, motion to approve the October.
I'm trying to turn off one thing.
Did you second that, Cheryl?
No. I'm trying to get my
Oh, okay.
audio to work. Let me leave this.
Somebody else getting, anybody else getting that echo reverb?
Yeah.
I see heads going up and down, I don't know if that's something that it can be controlled on your end, Jillian, or not.
Well, the issue is Cheryl is logged in twice, so Cheryl, I'm going to remove one of you, oh, I think you fixed it.
No, no, I did it already, don't remove the other one.
Okay.
This is the only one that works for the audio.
Okay, that sounds a lot better, thank you.
I got the other one turned off.
Okay, so we were about to get a, I think we got a motion to approve the October 18th minutes. From David, somebody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Good. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Three, it's all, and that'll be six zero unanimously. Thank you, and thanks again for that nice work on the minutes on that. Okay, now we're on to the gender review and public comment on non-agenda items, does anybody have any comments on the agenda review? Anybody have any problems with that or anything? Okay, so the first thing we're going to do is call on well, the almost first thing we're going to do is call on Jessica Wilson, I want to say a few words upfront though. Jessica Wilson wrote us a couple of months ago, and I think it was in kind of a response for Nancy was going around knocking on doors, asking what people thought of the up and coming trail. And Jessica responded to that, she wanted to come on board and make some, make some comments about her view on the trail. And I called, or I emailed Jessica and said I'd like to talk to her first. A friend of Jessica's called me up, I forget the friend's name, representing Jessica and said who she was, and I told her what I was about to say, which I'm going to say right now, is that number one, we're stuck without doing anything because we need a piece of land that we don't have right now. And the, our benefactor on that has been a little slow to move on it. And we, we just have to wait on that, I'm going to push a little harder to talk to him again this month, but the other thing is that as soon as we get going on this, we're going to do a, a formal neighborhood outreach to get commentary on the property and the, and the trail plan. And then Jessica's friend, or whoever was representing Jessica's friend said that sounds great, no reason for Jessica to have to make a comment to this month. And therefore Bill Bower Park got sliced off the agenda. And with that, I'll introduce Jessica, who is here to make comments tonight. And Jessica?
Oh, Tim, I'm going to put Jessica in here, but we also have Jennifer McGrath and Mary Reed in the audience. So I'm going to allow all three to talk so they can issue their comments, okay?
Okay, thanks.
This is Jessica Wilson, I don't know if you can hear me or not?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect.
And, and let me say, let's, let's keep it concise and not have repeats of the same topic, if possible. We'd appreciate it, but thank you, and we're grateful to have you here to make comments on this. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So, good evening, committee members, my name is Jessica Wilson and I live at 130 Palisade Circle, Manitou Springs. I'd like to take a few minutes tonight to discuss some concerns with the proposed Bill Bower Trail project that I believe you should take into consideration. I'll raise some issues and then I will be followed by two additional community members, one of which that Tim spoke to earlier this week. The overall question I pose to you is, is the juice worth the squeeze? First of all, I understand that your mission as OSAC is to make recommendations to city council for planning, maintenance, management, and stewardship of the city's open space and trail system. In speaking with the Parks and Recs Director and Mr. Beeson, it sounds like community engagement is planned for in the future. However, I, in speaking for a few of my community members here, feel that community engagement should begin earlier. We have several concerns that may ultimately influence the viability of the Bill Bower Trail project and believe that such a discussion should be a threshold issue to to continue the planning process. Building a trail in a fire-sensitive area can pose several risks and challenges. First of all, increased fire risk. Trails can provide access for fire spread, potentially allowing fires to move more rapidly through the area. This can come from a variety, various sources, such as smoking, warming fires, etc. This area, as you're aware, has geographically challenging terrain. This increased use will drive a change to the fire mitigation plan, something that is that this OSAC would be responsible for developing under the current city code. Listening to your past meetings and discussions over the last year, I am not confident that the maintenance, management, and stewardship aspect of your charter is being adequately focused on as you engage in the planning for this trail. Maintenance, management, and stewardship are not afterthoughts, they must be a part of the plan. Secondly, erosion and vegetation damage. Trail construction can lead to soil erosion and damage to vegetation, reducing the area's natural fire breaks. I urge you to consider this excerpt from the Community Input Section of the 2016 Parks, Open Space, and Trails Master Plan. Extensive, extensive comments were provided during a public engagement process. It is clear that the community strongly supports the open space program, wants to see more resources devoted to management and maintenance of properties, and perhaps most importantly, would prefer efforts go in towards stewardship and preserving the natural and undeveloped character of open space properties. Essentially, the community wants stewardship, preservation, not development into trails. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Paley for her next comment. Thank you.
Good evening commissioners, this is Paley Reed, you can see on the screen as Mary Reed, I do go by Paley. I'm at 129 Palisade Circle, and thank you very much for allowing us to join tonight. I am the one that spoke with Tim earlier, and Tim, since our conversation, Jessica and I, and a couple other of community members were supposed to join us, had again collaborated and felt like we probably needed to step in sooner and just have a dialogue with you all. So, my concerns, while trail development is, is great, and you know Colorado is known for its trails and certainly Manitou Springs, we do have already a lengthy trail system in our area that people utilize. The biggest problem I think for us is concerning the homeless population. I am an advocate for homeless intervention, work with Springs Rescue Mission as a landlord in the community helping to transition the homeless folks who are in their program into permanent housing. Most landlords don't allow or wouldn't approve of the folks coming out of Springs Rescue Mission because of their challenges with credit and other things, but we have taken the time to learn about that population, to support that population for housing. That being said, we've also learned a lot about the homeless population that exists outside Springs Rescue Mission's boundaries, i.e. what Manitou Springs has had complications with earlier, that in essence, they are needing warming fires to stay warm. If trail systems are developed, we think that this could encourage a homeless population to go into this area that is already challenged with defensibility of fires. And we have structures, people living in their residences all along the rim of this canyon that a fire would just instantly go up, there's so much brush. So, that's our concern, and then also in addition to that is the defensibility of these trails and wondering if the fire department has been brought in, if they can even, if they even have the resources to defend this area. That would be the second concern of mine, and so I thank you all for taking this into consideration.
Okay, thank you Mary. And we had a third party that was coming in?
Hi, yes, good evening, my name is Jennifer McGrath, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I reside at 152 Clark'sley Road, so I'm actually across the canyon from Palisade Circle. And my concerns when I was first told about the proposed walking trail, I know that the land hasn't been acquired yet, but really the environmental risk and possible damage to wildlife. Our area, in particular, the deer, the mountain lion, the bears, they use this area and that trail. this area and that trail, they come up to Mountain View, they actually go into Bill Bower Park. The deer get away from people in Bill Bower Park by using that creek bed. And I'm just wondering what the impact would be to the local wildlife population if we develop that trail? Is it going to drive them more into the neighborhood, more into town? So I do have concerns there.
Okay. Is that all the comments? Well, thank you very much. I'm sure everybody else took notes as well as me. And we're certainly going to give your concerns serious consideration. And we will do the we will do the outreach, community outreach prior to doing any work, for sure, up there, doing anything. The only thing we've started at this point is, and this is up for grabs as well, we looked at just putting a temporary pathway down there so that local residents could actually get down there safely and take a look at the area. And it sounds like you've been down there already and taken a pretty good look at it. So right now, we're not we're not in the process of creating any trails. Like I said, at most, what we would do right now would be a path to provide access to the local community. I think all of your all of your issues were good issues. And there's certainly things we need to consider. The fire danger is top of our list. And the homeless go right along with the fire, fire danger, unfortunately. Right now, there's a lot of a lot of dead wood, a lot of a lot of fuel if a fire ever took off down there. And one of the things that we can do to mitigate that is to clean things up quite a bit. Now, that assumes that we're going to build something down there. So, yeah, all those things are good questions, and we will hold on to them, and we will certainly make them part of the community outreach, which will take place before we start any trail building at all or even a decision on the trail building. Anybody else, any other members have a comment on that?
I just, I would like to just make sure people know that we have like the post master plan that the city of Manitou basically makes decisions based off of, which is helpful if you haven't looked at it before.
And Jennifer raised her hand up, Tim.
I do. Jennifer McGrath, I just had one other question. So the the walking trail would come up into Bill Bower Park, and it would essentially go right into the neighborhood. There aren't currently any bicycle lanes. You have to go at least a mile uphill to the road to get to the Entiman Trail and to also access the Red Rock Open Space. So that also needs to be a consideration of what other mitigations need to be made if people start using this access. It's basically just going to dump them into a residential neighborhood that may not be prepared to have extra traffic in there unless there's bike trails added. Because I I don't know, because we've been down there. We looked at it, my husband and I discussed, you know, oh, you know, if something was made, could it be a good sledding hill? But it is pretty steep. So I don't really know. You know what you guys, I know, again, you're still in the planning stages, but what you had in mind for this use of that space, just a walking trail, is from what I'm hearing from you guys.
Yeah, there's, I think that's a really good point, too, is that there's really no connectivity for bike trails. But what the what the post master plan looked at, and I think a number of other people have considered, is if that would provide a safe way to school for school kids to get down to Manitou Avenue, I question that. But but some people think that that would be an appropriate use. Again, all these things are going to come up in the community outreach, and we will do the community outreach as soon as we know that we actually have the property to build a trail down in there. Maybe that's the car before the horse. Let me think about that. For now, that's our plan. And again, we won't be doing anything until we have everybody's opinion from the from that area. So thank you so much.
Thank you for listening.
Really appreciate all three of you for reaching out and sharing your thoughts. Any other comments at this point?
I guess I would just want to clarify that in with all of our discussions so far, a lot of the topics of fire, I'm not sure we got into the homelessness. I think that started a little bit. But the the wildlife issues, all of that has come up and is on our list of of things to continue to research and discuss as we go through this process. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Robin. Yes, Judith.
Yes, and I just want to say, as a city council person, I want to start seeing environmental impact statements done and provided to council and the and the community regarding these sensitive wildlife areas. We talk about wildlife, but I want to I want to start, I want to start seeing some reports. I think this is a sensitive area.
Sorry, when you say environmental impact statement, that has the ring of something very officious to me. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yes. An environmental impact statement requires professionals to go into an area and look at that wildlife habitat and determine what the risk is of putting in a trail in. I've requested a wildlife habitat study to be done at the Dillon Motel area because there are two species. One is an owl and one is a bat that are in this area that are threatened. And I think that the community needs to know these things when they weigh in on whether they want to proceed. So I just want to throw that out there, that we talk about the wildlife, but I think at this point, we need to get a little bit more assertive about requesting official reports in the future. And I think this is a good thing to bring up at the community engagement meeting.
That's great, Judith. I think that's really good and important. And who would be doing that?
You know, that's a good question. So I would have to defer to Jillian on that and staff that we would take a look at this area. And if the community thinks that they really want to proceed with either a trail that would be a walking trail or a multi-use trail that an official wildlife habitat study be done and that the city consider funding that study.
We had the OSU Extension do some work for the Fields Park area, and they probably would be a good one to reach out to.
Excellent. Good, good, good. Thank you. That's a great idea.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you about Fields Park.
Just that we had the OSU or sorry, excuse me, not Oregon, Colorado Extension Service, Oregon, Colorado State University Extension Services did all that research for, or at least looking into the, you know, environmental aspects of the Fields Park area.
That's a great idea. How do we reel them in to do that?
Well, we have to reach out to them and ask them to come.
And who better to reach out? You want to give them a call?
Tim, I can reach out, and I will propose that we move the meeting along. Usually, public comment, folks issue their comment, and then the discussion takes place at a later time. So Paley, could you spell your name for me for the minutes, please?
Certainly, Jillian, it's P A E L E I G H. And my last name is Reed, R E I D. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jillian. Okay, we're done. Let's move on to reports. We have two Parks and Recreation Reports, one from eight five and one from nine nine. I thought these were pretty interesting. It sure would have been helpful to have a map to go with that as well. I don't have any comments on that. Anybody have comments? I think we don't have to approve these, but if there's any comments, it's a good time to make them. Okay, we don't have to approve them. We don't have any comments on them. We will move on. And the next thing is the director's comments, which kind of get called out here and get called out at the end of the meeting as well for various reasons we've discussed. But you did have something to call out on this, didn't you, Jillian?
Yeah, and I'm going to share my screen. I just wanted to show everyone some of the proposed signage that we're going to be installing at trailheads. One moment, figure this out. There it is. And let me scroll down here. Whoops.
It's way down.
Is it way down?
Yeah.
Ah, I don't have my mouse with me. All right, let's see. Here it is. Let me let me shrink that a little bit. So we've had a few folks call me and express some concern about motorized use on the soft surface trail system and the creek walk, actually. And the devices they called out were the one wheels. So that's this one in the center here, this person standing on on one wheel. So I, this is a sign that they use in open spaces in Colorado Springs, specifically on open spaces that contain Palmer Land Conservancy easements. And so I ran this by Steve with the Palmer Land Conservancy. And he said, Yeah, this is, this covers exactly what the Palmer Land Conservancy's conservation easement stance is. So just wanted to show this to everyone and see if there were any comments or concerns or suggestions for edits before we add these to our our trailheads. And they wouldn't be giant, but they will be noticeable.
What does that mean?
Something tells me that you're going to have more icons
Well, right. And this is just to make it pretty clear of what is motorized versus what is not. And this is according to the Palmer Land Conservancy. So this would be specific for our conservation easements.
When you say not not big or small, what are you talking about, like 16 by 16 or two feet by two feet? What do you mean? What do you think, you know?
Probably a little bigger than 12 by 18, which is a standard. The sign that we, the size of like our park rules, they're on 12 by 18 signs. So this one would be a little larger than that. So think a yard size or a yard sign size. That's what we're thinking, just to make them pretty visible.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm assuming, but I don't know this. All of the pictures above that have the cross not allowed make some noise. I don't know that. I mean, they home some of them, but I suppose. But I'm wondering about the scooter on the lower right. Is that electric?
Yes, it is electric. So per ADA standards, OPM, OPMDs, other power driven mobility devices technically are allowed by law on the trail system. Now, we're going to start seeing that scooter on the lower right on our soft surface trail system. But this is to keep these folks safe. If they're on our urban trails and someone's yelling at them that they're using a scooter, they are legally allowed to use that scooter or use their powered wheelchair if it is an OPMD. So that's just making that clarification. So those users have that protection.
They're all electric.
Yes, they're also electric, but it's for accessibility that they that they are allowed on the trails.
Right.
Good question.
Sorry, Tim, sorry. Are they identified as such? Do they have some kind of plate so you know that what they're saying is the truth?
That's a good question. I think most of them have a sticker. But I don't know if they have to have that sticker displayed on their device. I'll ask Jeffrey, our accessibility coordinator. But yeah, that's a great question, Judy.
Okay, any more comments on this? Then let us move on. To new business, and this is kind of new business, old business. Let me flip down to this. What you will see here is a repeat map I put up there before. Hopefully, I'm going to see that. There we go. There we go. Yeah, on page, I don't know what page is, what page is that on 23? In the packet, I believe it's on page 23. This is that map I've put up before. It's of the North Red Mountain escarpment that goes down and eventually ends in real roads, not just mapped roads. Most of these roads that you see on here that you see on that don't exist. It's not till you get down to Chiquita that there's actually roads that have houses on them and utilities to them and whatever. These things were all built and, or, excuse me, the roads were all mapped and parcels all platted and sold out when somebody was, somebody was apparently, one theory is that there was a bit of a scam that was going on to sell these to people out east and whatever. Anyway, they sold off a ton of them. Some of these properties, all of the Ps that you see there are private properties. Okay? Anything that's in green or the writing's in green, that's Manitou Manitou Springs property. And what we're trying to do here, what the concept is, little by little, we're going to connect the dots. The property is pretty worthless unless somebody wants to come in and spend a whole heck of a lot of money because there's no utilities to them. And there's issues about putting utilities in any further up the hillside there. So every once in a while, we get one of these calls, and we did that just the other day. Denise Howell got that call, and we've got these Ps that are in yellow are two additional lots, and the lot numbers are down there. And that's really the only thing you need to identify these are the parcel numbers that distinguishes them from everything else. The other parcel, and I know I'm not sharing this right now, but the other parcel from from last month was just across the road above it and a little bit over. So these things are starting to come together. And at some point, we can, we can what do you call it, David, when you, when you?
Vacate, a lot line?
Vacate, thank you very much. At some point, we can start vacating these these roads, these non-existent roads, and add them as well to our open space. So anyway, that's what we're doing here. Denise asked me if we could bring this up for a vote here, and that's what we're doing. And we've done this before, and we voted in the last one. And I hope we'll vote in this one as well. So can we have a motion to vote to accept these lots as a gift?
I make the motion that we accept these two lots as a gift.
I'll second. Oh, goodie.
We have competing seconds from Judy and David. We have competing seconds from Judy and David. Could we please see the, uh, a show of hands for everybody that's in favor of doing that? It looks like we all are. It's hard to argue with a gift horse, right? So unanimously, we approve recommendation to city council to accept these properties as a gift. Okay. I think when I have the opportunities to sit in front of council, um, when is that coming up?
That should be November twelfth, your presentation, Tim, for OSAC?
Yeah, November twelfth. I think I'll also suggest, which I've probably suggested ten times in the past, that we have somebody actually start mining these things, sending letters out and stuff like that to tell people that we certainly appreciate the gift of these and we're trying to consolidate them into a a larger open space in Red Mountain. So anyway, that's that. That's new business. Onto old business. And do we actually have somebody here to talk on that?
So Andrew could not make it tonight, but I am going to share the concept plan that he sent me. And we have Josh, who is also fairly familiar with the Phase Six project. So I'm going to share my screen.
Okay, Josh was.
Oh, and sorry, Josh Rade is our senior GIS technician.
I'm the senior GIS tech and I'm also, uh, one of the assistant project managers with the city. Essentially, I'm here representing the engineering department on this matter.
Excellent.
So what you see before you is what we had drawn up from Glenn with JR Engineering. Essentially, it's a ten-foot multi-modal road. It, it continues on picking up from the Roxton Roundabout up to Rainbow Falls. Per CDOT regulations, it'll be ten feet wide, except for a couple of areas we are looking to request a variance on. Um, including near the left-hand side of that page, there's a little region. And that's just, it kind of gets a little tight in between the road and the, um, creek. And we'd prefer not to go through and like build decking or any of that stuff to reach that ten-foot margin. So which hence the reason we are seeking to request a variance from CDOT. CDOT is also going to be one of the main, if not the financial backing behind this project. So we're kind of tied up with doing everything according to CDOT's rules. When you use their money, you gotta, gotta play in their ballpark. You know what I'm saying? So currently she's got the second page pulled up. This pretty much take from uh, the center down towards that crosswalk where that pullout is. Then carrying on that ten-foot, uh, pathway. Um, we currently, if you go out there on site, you can see the survey markers. This is, this drawing is based off the, uh, second rendition. So myself and Andrew went out there. Want to say late last week. And got, uh, basically just some centerline changes, um, just to kind of make everything flow a little better. And, you know, once again, try not to ask for too many variances for that ten-foot, uh, width. While also trying to limit our footprint on the creek.
So are we gonna, is there going to be a crosswalk where the path goes closest to Rainbow Falls? How do people get to Rainbow Falls?
So right there at the dirt pullout, uh, if you scroll back down just a hair. So that's where they cross from the north side of the road, that crosswalk near the left-hand side of the page. And if you guys have been down Serpentine, you can see that we've already, uh, inlaid uh, some striping there, um, in the thermoplastic in order to kind of prep for this, but also act, provide access to the creek from that dirt pullout. So we're kind of using one project we've already done in this one to kind of tie everything together. So we're not, you know, just throwing money at the problem. A lot of this design has been based around trying to do this as economically as possible. You guys probably have seen previous designs where it initially hugged the north side of the road and took it under the bridge and that, that required like a whole bunch of new infrastructure in and around that bridge, which, uh, we're already having to work on a repair job for. And just trying to make best use of the money as we can. So it flips over to the south side of the road, takes it on up. Uh, they'll walk along the south side of that Serpentine Bridge. Um, if you flip over to the next page. So that bridge is right, uh, right about where that, um, should be right where that dash line is going through. Just a little to the left of Gillian's cursor. Basically, it continues on along the south edge of that bridge on up to Rainbow Falls. And it all kind of comes in that gate. Yep.
What, what happens to the lines when you take down the utility poles?
You mean, uh, just like what happens to the utility lines?
Yeah.
We underground them. So.
They'll all be suddenly undergrounded.
Yes, ma'am. So we'll be, that's part of, part of the project is going through and undergrounding all those utilities in that region. Um, you're probably already familiar. We're currently in the process of finalizing some undergrounding for Creek Walk Phase Four. And that'll take the electric lines off of overhead poles through from basically Chamber of Commerce up to the, uh, Chase Bank. Pretty much same exact process. Uh, so there might be a couple of little utility panels in the walkway or next to the walkway. I don't know if you guys have seen any of those around town, but anytime there's an undergrounding project, CSU will have like an access panel so they can still get to all of their lines. But it'll really, really cut down on the, uh, overhead infrastructure, our region. Make it nice and pretty.
Hey, Josh?
What can I do for you?
I just wanted to mention that the, uh, the I think it's twenty percent of the half a million dollar funding uh, that CDOT's putting in that are matching funds from, uh, OSAC.
Okay.
From the open space fund. I think it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We just keep carrying it from, from year to year until we actually spend that.
Get it built. Well, CDOT's now laid, laid some money down for these surveys. So, uh, they're interested in moving, moving this on.
It's kind of an interesting thing, too. I think it's eighty-eight thousand dollars for OSAC is, uh, for, um, Pike's Peak Regional Area of Governments. And then the, uh, rest of that is, I believe, directly to CDOT. And the two of them combined come out to twenty percent of, or of what CDOT's willing to put into it. So it's, uh, yeah, it's a group, it's a group, uh, a group endeavor. We don't have anywhere near the level of detail that you have in our brains, but we're a little bit familiar with this. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Josh?
What can I do for you?
On the undergrounding that you just mentioned from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, upstream to the Chase Building, is that a Manitou project? Is that a CSU project? How, how does that get done?
Uh, it's a bit of both.
I would think so. I mean.
Doing effort.
Who funds, who funds it? Is it split?
Uh, it is a split. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head that a percentage split. But I do, you know, it's CSU's lines, but at the same time, we're the one requesting them get buried. So.
Right. On the, on the ten-foot walkway, moving to section six there, on the portion that's, uh, north of the roadway. I don't know the right way to ask the question. How survivable is that concrete tread in a flood event? And I don't mean a flood event that, you know, a catastrophic one that wipes out, you know? But in the normally predictable overflow of that creek, I mean, I've certainly seen it where we closed Serpentine because the creek's too full. So how do you, is that part of the design criteria? To somewhere off of that, so it doesn't get washed out?
Yeah. So, you know, we're looking at, in a couple of areas, we may have to do things such as the retaining wall where, where we have areas of the embankment there that could be susceptible to being washed out. Like I said, this is, this is the second set of drawings. So we're, we're kind of still cementing some of the, uh, design aspects behind it. However, it'll all be done according to CDOT standards. And as CDOT requires, there will be concrete testing that will occur. Um, and it has to meet, you know, certain levels of pressure testing, certain aspects regarding temperature. Give me a second. What'd you say?
The compressive strength. But yeah, that gets into the, the specs for the concrete. I was thinking about the design, but you've answered it. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's great, Josh. Thank you.
My pleasure.
It's, it's good to hear that this is moving along. People spending, spending our money. That's exciting.
Yeah, especially now that CDOT's seen the first, the first invoice. They're like, move this along. We will have to, you know, pursuant to conditions for pouring asphalt, we, or concrete, rather, will likely be waiting until next any pouring will occur because we have to have a string of days with forty degrees and rising to get any concrete poured. And being at, you know, it is now the end of October, we're probably dwindling on days for such weather. So I, I would foresee, uh, construction rolling out in the spring, depending on, you know, different, uh, constraints. But, um, there will be some like prep work, like you, like going out there now, you can see the survey markers. Just kind of as we progress, there'll be more and more done. Um, there'll probably be some, some clearing that happens over the spring and just kind of prepping the site for, uh, pour.
Great, great. Okay, uh, moving right along, uh, Josh is also the star of item number two on old business, which is an update on the GIS trails map. And I'm excited about this. I've been waiting to see this for a long time. That's a lot of work.
Yeah, so I'm going out there personally, a little preference, prefet, preface, this whole thing. I went out and I did all of our trail mapping. So I, uh, was actually out there on foot doing my mapping on the phone, um, drawing out exactly what our trail system looked like. Once I had an actionable file, I turned those files into what is to become the Manitou Springs Hiking Trail Interactive Application. I need a shorter name. It's a work in progress. But with that being said, I will go ahead and share my screen. Oh, can everybody see this? This is currently what it looks like on the webpage version. Um, I have mainly optimized it for phone use so that it looks a little widened. Um, so the different colors you're seeing are coded for the Inman Trail, Blue is Creek Walk, Green, Iron Mountain, Purple, Red Mountain. I probably ought to make Red Mountain red. But, um, you know, you can kind of zoom in, play around. These triangles are the, uh, trailheads. These little T cross plus signs are trail connections where two trails meet. Let me get this little tab off the side. You've got the option to full screen, minimize. You can use this candy little feature up here to find your location. That's going to zoom all house. But say I was on the trail, I can use that little enable that share my, or, uh, current location function to track your progress along the trail. This, this is basically what the phone version looks like. So if this were, you were to open this on your phone. I have it in the editor screen right now, so I can't play with it and show you. But, um, there we go. So this is basically what it looked like on a cell phone. You can look at all this. I'm still in full screen on your cell phone. You, once again, you have that, uh, location feature. The home button will take you just to the overview of Manitou, but it's pretty straightforward. It's just kind of a tool to be able to find trailheads, track progress along. You know, see what you're getting yourself into before you're all the way up it, you know? But I, we plan on making this available to the public so that it kind of increases our, uh, ecotourism per se, and makes the, uh, Manitou Trail System more accessible for the public. Um, I will say in doing this trail mapping project, I found that between all of the, all of the trails, including, you know, this little hard surface leg where it comes up Pawnee as, as what we've constructed on the Creek Walk path. Creek Walk, yeah, Creek Walk path so far. Um, between all that together, we're, we're about a little north of ten miles. So that's actually about, I believe it's about four miles more than what our website currently says. So that's, it's a pretty significant number. Um, I've got everywhere from where it picks up here in the cemetery comes over, uh, you've got the Iron Mountain. You have more Inman down here, more Inman up here, Red Mountain over here. And all the way where it connects up here with the, the cog. In case anyone was ever curious, we've got, you can, uh, select these features here. And it'll pull up my lovely photography skills. Of, you know, what the trailhead looks like. As well as, um, like what the trailhead is for. Also got on the connecting points, like this point can, and Iron Mountain. There's a little trail marker you're looking for.
Josh, Tim has a question.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, let me pull back up Zoom.
No, that's okay. Nothing to be sorry about. I just wanted to ask if, if you had a property boundaries layer on this?
I don't on this one. Just because I didn't think that needed to be, uh, necessarily part of public scope. So I was not wandering way off the trails. Of course, I mean, I can always.
Okay, that makes sense. It would be handy though for OSAC to have property boundaries. So that we know if we're wandering off trails and whose property it is.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I even have, uh, I have parcel maps that I've loaded into field apps, um, field maps. And we use that internally for the city. So like, if anyone was ever curious, like who's, you know, oh, this, you know, this is all messed up. We need to contact someone to fix it. I, they can whip out their parcel map. Be like, oh, this is five, four, six, four, uh, I don't know, Pawnee. Um, and then there's a link to the assessor's site where you can find like ownership information. This, that, and the third. This, that, and the third. Kind of handy to have.
Okay, so that's something we could possibly ask for?
Yeah, I could, I could even throw that down on like a, like a web viewer and program a quick little application like this one.
That'd be great. Uh, one other question, did you include Eagle Mountain Trail?
Eagle Mountain Trail?
The only thing we own on Eagle Mountain Trail is a um renewable uh easement. That gives us access to a, actually a pretty wonderful trail that wanders up into an area known as Eagle Mountain. It's actually not right on the trail, but I, I may, I can point that out to you sometime. It'll give you someplace to meander to, add to our trail inventory.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to do it. I mean, it's pretty hard to find a uh, a project with as nice views as this one has.
Yeah, this one has some good ones. Well, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And uh, from here, I plan on making some like uh PDF map plates. So that uh, like, we can, people could print them off on the, from the website. Like such, you know, because I'm, not everyone is like, oh, let me use this app, you know, they're not all, all about it with tech savvy and all that. And uh, I think it would be nice to have printable map PDFs available. Um, so that's probably about the next leg of this project is to do some of that. I do have a few questions. One, you know, what exactly that should look like? Because like this whole Inman is pretty, pretty wild. Especially with it.
Does, does this include, does that ten miles include uh Black Canyon?
It does not include Black Canyon either.
No, we only want to put designated trails on this map for now, Tim. Yeah, uh, just because we want folks going on the trails we've mapped, not the ones we haven't mapped yet.
Yeah, good point. Okay, well, Josh, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Great presentation.
Yeah, if you guys have any notes or feedback, please feel free to send them my way. Um, I sent to the OSAC mailing list a link to this application. Um, so if you, I don't know if you get any, you guys saw it before the meeting, or if you have it, or if you are subscribed to that OSAC mailing list, I don't know if that's everybody and not exactly sure, but if you need the link, please feel free to reach out. Um, my email address is just jradie with the Manitou Manitou Springs CO dot gov extension. Um, I'm happy to shoot over a link that, or I've provided the link to Jillian. I'm sure she can blast it out to you guys too. Um, but if there's anything you guys need, maps, drawing, something built, let me know.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Fields Park Creek Walk. And what we've got here is potentially a uh vote on um costs for uh the um, the woodwork we want there, the tree trimming and deadwood removal. Plus the um, the quote for the fence removal. And we don't want to waste money. But it would be nice, maybe this is just my temperament. It would be nice to get that finished. You know, right now we've got, it's, it's uh behind um um, fencing and, and there's a lot of uh deadwood in there that needs to be removed and everything. I believe that we're gonna, we're gonna incur that uh, that fencing removal. Regardless of whether uh Matthew goes in there and does work on the, on the um, deadwood. Is that correct, Jillian?
Uh, I know at one point, OSAC had said that you would fund the fence removal, but I don't think a formal vote was ever taken. So yes, one way or another, the fence will need to come down.
Okay, so what we're looking at is with that low bid in there, we're looking at twenty-two hundred dollars. Um, above uh what our sunk costs and promises are. So um, let's have a conversation about whether or not we want to do that, fund that. Or if we want to wait until uh, um, Josh has the time to uh get to it uh in the coming year. Um, anybody have any comments?
I, this is Robin. I uh, I'm all for both uh, the, the front range arborist and the peak fencing, just, just go for it and, and do it.
That was David.
Yeah, I, I agree to, to get it done. I thought we'd uh, like Jillian had said, I think, uh, certainly in concept, we'd approved funding both of these and that we had the funds to do it.
We do. We haven't voted on this yet and uh, that, that front range arborist make it, makes it very, much more uh
Affordable.
Uh, pleasant than uh tall timbers, which is what I think we had before. So shall we take, would somebody like to make a motion that we pay for the peak fencing and the front range arborist to do the work that we've been commenting on?
Yeah, so shall I make a, a motion to go ahead and accept the front range arborist and the peak fencing in the range of five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars?
Second.
Um, everybody, wait for a second because I, there we go. Can't see you. Everybody uh, raise your right hand to vote for this. And what have we got? We've got uh, all six of us. Okay. And we've got all seven of us. How did we move to seven? Okay, great. Okay, um, all right. Unanimous vote in favor of spending this, this money. Uh, Jillian? Will you move forward on this?
Yeah, thank you, everyone. This is exciting. Um, yeah, absolutely, definitely.
Okay. That's great. Yeah, it is exciting. It's nice to see something get done and uh, we can just lay it on uh Danu's doorstep. And I'll of course support her any way I need to as far as going to city council meetings and stuff like that. All right, that's great. Um. The next uh, uh item is Black Canyon Open Space. And the only reason we have this on the agenda here, we don't have anything to really decide. And I put in the uh, the flyer and the map that we use for the, I think it was, it's a flyer in there for the uh for the uh public um, awareness or whatever. It was for one of the two um walkthroughs that we had. The first one was uh for the stakeholders, which was on the seventh of October. And then the next one was on the eighteenth of October, which was for, for the public in general. And I got my knee taken off on the eighth, so I didn't make the second one. But they were very successful and I, I, I certainly appreciate everybody's work on those, especially Steve uh uh Stephen Myers, Kim Lee Horn. I think you did a great job. But I would uh certainly like to hear anybody's comments that was at either one of those walkthroughs.
I, I just don't know what feedback we got, uh, I guess last Jillian. The stakeholder site walk was really all city staff. Um, Steve Harris was there from Palmer Land Conservancy, and then we had two representatives from Cedar Heights, but I don't know any input that was received from any city staff. Uh, I don't know how I would know it, but I will tell you that I don't, and I don't know what, if we got any follow-up uh from the Cedar Heights guys. Does anybody know on either question?
As far as I know, I know Stephen mentioned he had not received feedback from Cedar Heights pertaining to the, the stakeholder walk. He did receive feedback from the city, although I don't think he sent it out to us yet. He was waiting on any additional feedback from that first group. Because he wants to combine, combine all the feedback together from the, both of the sidewalks. So I don't have that information yet, David. But I know Stephen's working on compiling it.
I know on the seventh, there um, there, there were very few audible comments from many of the city staff. Um, Stephen did a Myers from um, Kim Lee did a real nice job of of introducing things as he did on the October eighteenth. So there just wasn't a lot of discussion. Um, so I wasn't aware of any uh city staff input. And then on the eighteenth, uh Andrea was on that one too. We had some cyclists from Manitou Spokes, uh Cory Satella joined us. Trying to remember who else we had a, uh, and a couple of other members of the public. But again, it all seemed very positive, to opening it up and, and creating uh some avenues to get up there and enjoy it. But the, I think the more important thing is the next, uh, the next steps, this uh public. Jillian, I don't know the right phrase again. It's the ma, just continuing the master plan process for the public?
Yeah, it, the next step, and this is an important date for everyone to keep in mind, it's the community workshop for the Black Canyon Open Space Master Plan on Thursday, December fifth from five thirty to seven thirty. So it would be excellent to have some OSAC representation there, of course. And then invite anyone you know who's interested in the master plan for the open space. But that's Thursday, December fifth at Memorial Hall from five thirty to seven thirty. And we'll be sending out, it'll be on social media. We'll send out an unofficial flyer, um, but you're the first to know.
Are, are we, is OSAC involved in that presentation?
No, it will not be an OSAC meeting. This is a public meeting hosted by our consultants and the city.
Okay.
That'll be great. Yeah, and then following that will be a presentation to city council.
Well, following that will be the presentation to OSAC. Yep, so it's um, the community workshop, they're gonna compile their finalized concept plans. They're going to present to you guys in January, at your January meeting. And then if you approve, if, if you support the plan they're bringing forward, it will go to city council in February. For the uh final approval of the master plan. That's the timeline right now.
City council vote on that when, February?
So if, if it is approved at your January meeting, it will be on February fourth. I believe that's the first city council meeting of February. Um, so we'll get it on the agenda right after you approve it, and if you don't approve it, it will be on a later meeting for city council.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Um, one of the reasons I included the, the flyer and the map in there is so if you have people that you want to say, go look at this property. Uh, you can give them a good idea of where it's at just by pointing it to uh, to what's in this month's um, uh, Black Canyon uh section. Um, it doesn't exactly, it's not great as far as telling, telling you where that trail actually starts and crosses the bridge and stuff like that, but it's better than nothing. And you can walk up there with them and show them. And the other thing I really wanted to emphasize is that we need to get everybody up there that hasn't seen that. And one of the challenges on that is that we can't tell you to go up and look for the orange flagging. Because our uh homeless friends up there have been pulling down, or I assume the home, I shouldn't blame them, I don't know who it is. Uh, have been pulling down the, the flagging as fast as we can put it up. So, I, I think, they think this is good, clean fun. I don't know how we convince them that it's not. But uh, I don't know of anybody that's been successful at that. Yeah, hard to catch people doing that. But it's really uncomfortable. I wish we could find a way to uh permanently, we could paint, paint the trees. Yeah, I know, I don't like that either.
Yeah, that doesn't sound right. I'm with Andrea on that one.
It sounds like we're now the Vandals. But there must be some kind of paint that you can use for this, so that lasts a month or so. So that uh, because otherwise we're just sending people up there blind unless they've got a guide. Right now, our guides are me, who is lame, um, Jillian and David and Andrea. So that's four of us, well, three of us, not including me. So if you're listening and you haven't been up there, tap one of these people and ask for a guide. I don't know if I can say that about Jillian. She's not.
That sounds fun. I'll take someone up there.
Great, that's great.
So I, I'm, I don't know if I'm lost yet. This is the post you were talking about, right?
Yeah.
Was this for that open hike?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's passed. All right.
That's passed. Um, but yeah, really yeah, really make an effort to get somebody to take you up there to show it to you. I'll, I'll probably be hiking in the woods in a month or so. He said absolutely certain that that would be the case. I don't know when I'll be hiking. Um, anyway, that's what we're doing and that's uh what we hope you can all do. It's really beautiful up there. It's really a nice space and uh, uh, Kim Lee Horn has done a great job of using the existing um, uh, rocks and trails and giving us one point seven miles of trails in a very small space without overlooking other trails and stuff like that. I think, I think they've done a great job. Okay, onward. Anything else on that? Anybody want to mention? Judith? Oh, I thought you raised your hand. Okay, uh.
Oh, Tim, I have one more thing. So uh, Kim Lee Horn is also creating an online survey similar to what uh we did for the Higginbotham Flats Master Plan. So folks who didn't, or I guess it's just a survey to gather more feedback for maybe people who couldn't attend the site walk or just want to share information. So that survey should be out. I believe they're gonna try to get it out next week if I'm, if I have that right. Um, but they're in the stage of developing the questions for the survey now.
Is that, are you saying that will go to every Manitou residence?
Uh, I know we'll share it on social media. I don't know if we'll email it directly to all the residents, but it will be shared with OSAC and on social media, and it will be on the Black Canyon Open Space website, uh, project website, which is up right now.
Cool. Yeah, so get the word out. Let people know, uh, we'd like their inputs. Thank you. Okay, um, existing trail maintenance. Uh, the first thing as always is Iron Mountain. And what have you heard from uh Traction Trail Works?
So in a perfect world, they would be starting this week, but I have had difficulty getting the contract back from Chad from Traction Trail Works. And so, Tim, as soon as we get it back, we just have to get it notarized, it has to be notarized on their side. And Chad actually lives in Michigan, um, and for some reason, there's just been a, a communication And Chad actually lives in Michigan, um, and for some reason, there's just been a, a communication block. But as soon as I get it, they, they'll be able to start, cause we want to give folks adequate notice also, cause that trail will be closed for a while. Um, so my best guesstimate would be mid-November, but I am waiting to hear back from him. Um, for, for that finalized contract.
Frustrating, isn't it? That's all we can do right now is wait. Um. Washout section on, well, okay, I'll take, I guess we got the last word on that, uh, last time, didn't we Andrea, that, uh. Um, Shanti said they'd get to it next year?
Yeah, I mean, he was optimistic about the timeframe, but, uh, we need to create a project description, um.
Okay.
At some point, yeah.
Okay, um, you and I probably ought to work on that?
Um, yeah, we could try, um. I don't know how technical it needs to be, but maybe you and Jillian and I can put our heads together and come up with a plan on that.
Okay. It's been a tough nut to cr- to. Crack. Um, washout, uh, Red Mountain, I don't think there's anything, is there, that we're looking to do right now? That's, uh, that's dead for the year. I don't think we've got anything that really needs attention on that, which is really nice. And other trail maintenance, anybody think of anything? Besides Black Canyon? Okay, well, let's, uh, go on to, um, and this is mainly a note to myself. Signage on Creek Walk and. Old Inman Trail, and I've just got that in case, uh, David, is there anything further that you want to provide or talk about?
Yeah, Jillian and I spoke and, um. Her suggestion, uh, seemed to make a lot of sense. She has relatively new staff on park maintenance and it would help. If I just met, walked that portion of Inman or drove the trail connections with them. And that sounded like a really efficient way to move it along and get their input and expose them to where those places are. So we thought we'd set that up in the next week or two.
Okay.
Good.
Um, I was gonna say, let me know, I don't know if I'll be walking that much by then. But let me know. Or let somebody else know and bump me. Anybody else want to, uh, walk with David on the, the signage stuff?
I would, if it's on a weekend or something. If it's on a Saturday or Tuesday.
Okay, just bump me on out of there, Judy, what the heck?
This is the only time I'll be able to walk faster than you are.
Okay, Judy, we'll check with you.
Thanks.
See if we can include, okay.
Oh, and, and the last thing I have on here, and I'm not quite sure why I am here, is the, uh. Red Mountain, Northern Escarpment, the first property we looked at. That's old news, but just wanted to let you know, it's, it's going to city council. Um, shortly, along with the other two pieces of property that we just approved. And that is it. Anybody got anything else right now? Alright, we have a motion to.
I just have one thing, one thing. Would it be a good idea while we're all sitting here to set up the Black Canyon Walk? Instead of trying to do it afterwards or next week when it snows, do it and.
Yeah, the problem is, do we want to set this up as a public meeting?
As a what?
As a public meeting.
Oh, okay.
More than two of you.
Yeah.
Then we have to set it up as a public meeting.
I would like to go. Anybody else like to go, who hasn't gone? Cheryl, are you waving your hand?
Okay, the mask, Cheryl, um.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, if, if you three could go with David, that would be fantastic. You're gonna have, we're gonna have to advertise it as a public meeting. Um, that has to be provided at least twenty-four hours prior to the, uh.
Do we do that through Jillian?
Really, um, probably three days prior to the, to the activity. So why don't you guys s- set it up?
Yeah, that'll go through me. So as soon as you know the date and time, let me know and I'll get that agenda posted for it.
And you might have some other people join you, who knows?
And I think we will. David, what do, what do you want? What do you like to do? Cheryl, are you, are you wanting to come?
Uh, I would like to come if I'm in town.
Okay. How about you, David? What's your availability? Mine is Tuesdays and Saturdays, that's all I got.
Okay, I can email you.
Okay.
And, but I, I couldn't see or hear who else was talking, I'm sorry, I just couldn't.
Robin Gobats and Cheryl Klein.
Oh, Robin, okay, I'm sorry, just couldn't pick it up.
We'll, we'll see if I, if my foot is okay to walk, so I may, I'm real iffy, so.
Be the walking wounded here, what's going on?
Okay, I will do that tomorrow. I'll put an email out. Can I do that, uh, Jillian? Can I inquire to them with an email? Is that all right?
Uh, I actually don't know.
I don't think you can. Why don't you state, state a date, uh, David?
Yeah, pick a Tuesday, Judy. Pick one. Tomorrow's the twenty-ninth, then we have the fifth.
It's election day.
Yeah, I can't do the fifth.
What about the twelfth? Yeah, I can't either. That's a busy day.
Twelfth could work.
Robin, what do you think?
That would be better than the fifth, give my foot more time.
Cheryl?
I might, I might be there that week, so that could work possibly.
Anytime you prefer, time of day?
Well, wh- wh- what about, wh- what would you all think about, like, ten thirty? It's real nippy in the morning.
Everybody's nodding their heads. Cheryl is iffy.
I'm there in town.
Oh, okay, yeah. There's that.
Where do we meet?
We meet on El Paso where you turn to enter either Black Canyon Road or the Balance Rock Road. And you, you park along the, uh, the creek and the park there, the city park. So you're still on El Paso and they're parking, it's marked for parking.
And we ought to drag, uh, TJ up there if he's around.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do it as long as we publish it.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, David, just, just while I'm here, can I have your email address yours?
Yeah, you might as well send it out to everybody. You haven't been up there, Judith, have you?
I have been up there once. If you're talking to me, i- if I'm the Judith you're talking to.
You're the Judith I was talking to.
I actually probably could make it, uh, on that, on the twelfth at ten thirty, so.
It's a party, yay.
I'll send an email to TJ.
David, can I get your email address?
Uh, yeah, if you can, if you can hear me, okay, it's Conley, C O N L E Y. P C at P C I S Y S. Dot net. That's P C I S Y S dot net.
Yeah, I know that one. Great.
Okay, and, um.
So I have a question.
Okay.
Julian, what would happen if, I mean, let's say the weather's terrible and we have to call it off, but we can't. We can't email each other because there's too many of us?
That is a great question. Judith, do you know the answer to that? If, if the meeting has to be canceled, how we go about that?
Well, i- i- you know, if, if you're just putting out a statement like the, the meeting's canceled and you're not talking about like. Uh, business, like committee business, that's okay.
Okay.
It's when you're talking about committee business, um, that you get in trouble.
Okay, good, we won't get in trouble.
But if it's, if it's publicly, um, noted, you know, notified, then the public thinks that there's a meeting. And then we all through email cancel it, and then the public's not notified that the meeting's canceled.
Public just to be notified.
Right, the public does need to be notified, but if it's an emergency, you can certainly just let Elena Krebs know, it's, uh, the city clerk and she can post a. Put a posting in the, in the window at city hall, um, um, you have to, you have to post it in two places. So one in the window of city hall and then online, I think would suffice. I mean, if it's an emergency, you know, and we, you know, the, it's snowing and, yeah.
And then maybe one of us would just go up there and wait just to make sure somebody would, who doesn't see. Wouldn't, we could tell them, just be there at ten thirty and.
Okay, um.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank all, thank you all.
Bye, everyone.